Favor?
Hi.
Propose? In terms of? Thank you. So we're gonna have public comments here, so please limit to three minutes and if you live in the city, please tell us your ward.
I. A town like Aberdeen that is struggling economically may need to fund community events to get them off the ground and to support them even when they can't quite support themselves. When the quality of life goes up in a town, then it lifts every aspect of that town. I'm thinking of Rain Glow Fest of 2024. I'm also our Art Block and also the Sunday Market as examples. I encourage you all to embrace helping out those organizations and people who just want to make Aberdeen a place to be more proud of. And I grew up here. My passion for Aberdeen and my legacy, our legacy should be for our kids, not for any of us. And in closing, I'd like to say, before children speak, they sing. Before they write, they paint. As soon as they stand, they dance. Art is the basic of human expression. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, girl. Evening, folks. I'm Steve Jensen. I'm here to comment on the Grace Harbor County Emergency Shelter RFP. I spoke at the county commissioners meeting yesterday. For over forty years, I've worked as an environmental engineer through PhD as well as legal counsel regarding homeless mitigation and have consulted with municipalities across the US and Canada for as long. This current county RFP is not only technically flawed via no objective feasibility study requirement, but a sounding that includes a ridiculous supposition whereby the county is hoping to saddle strapped Aberdeen taxpayers with funding the proposed countywide homeless emergency shelter ops and admin in perpetuity beyond their initial offering of a one-time and remicable stipend of $500,000. This as opposed to the city already and dysfunctionally spending almost 300K of Aberdeen taxpayer money per year, providing new tents, garbage service, needle exchange, and porta-potties for the homeless who actively choose to live free on the street under the bridge. Population has actually doubled in size over the course of the last year. Thanks to Aberdeen's now regionally garnered third feet of reputation, as well as the litany of parasitic 501(c)(3) nonprofit grant grifters who have formed their own homeless industrial complex, along with the city's nonenforcement of common law violations that apply to everyone. Further, in to counter this utterly flawed and competently conceived vision, no single economically challenged city within Grace Harbor County should be settled with perpetually funding and dealing with a never-ending countywide and beyond growing homeless problem. Grace Harbor County's one-time offer of their $500,000 carrot for the shelter with nothing beyond is an insulting drop in the bucket versus the tens of millions upon millions that it would cost low-income Aberdeen taxpayers in continual annual shelter ops and admin beyond the straining of our fire, police, and ambulance services. The upshot, if this proposed emergency shelter is slated to serve the homeless of Grace Harbor County and beyond, then it nothing short needs to be constructed in tandem with the subsequent high-intensity services and requirements, including sobriety, forced participation in mental health and drug treatment, sequential job training and placement to actually address the root substance abuse addictions, cycle the homeless through the complete program to get them off the street, out of the shelter, and back into a productive living and working environment, and have said shelter and program be funded, operated, and administered by the entire tax base within Grace Harbor County in perpetuity. In defense of her mostly paycheck, the paycheck taxpayers, that is the only position that Aberdeen should ever accept from Grace Harbor County. Otherwise, your emergency shelter, like the routinely failed Housing First Tiny Homes initiatives that I've been involved with, will be full of long-term drug-addicted homeless tenants with other homeless from afar again backing up into Aberdeen, something that is further substantiated by the vague description of an emergency shelter under Washington RCW 367830. You can look that up. And this proposed shelter, of course, does nothing to address the ever-growing and shocking illegal street camping that is not only inundating Aberdeen, but that the city of Aberdeen is currently apparently allowing and facilitating. Beyond this, Aberdeen should actually table the entire issue pending the upcoming SCOTUS ruling on the flawed Ninth Circuit Martin versus Boise ruling coming up in April 2024. Although Aberdeen can and should be currently enforcing common law violations against the homeless, as other cities routinely do, a decision against MBB would remove any ability for virtue signaling activists to cause legal sideshow troubles with illegally conveyed enforcement actions that municipalities are entitled to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
We don't do that right now, thanks.
My name is Joseph Powell. I'm a member of the second ward. I'm here today as a business owner representing Powell Market Garden. We are the second highest grossing vendor at the Aberdeen Sunday Market and only through the help of groups like Cold Harbor, who also helped to run the homeless shelter that was here before. I mean, the way that you're depicting these people, I'm sorry, this is really sick. I'm a member of what we thought Delta, that's one for excellence in the field of economics. When you wanted one group against each other, that's not how it works. I'm so sorry. We need to help people. That's not why I came up here, but this is, sorry, caught me off guard. Anyways, at Powell Market Garden, we say, we can make the world a better place if we try. And that's what we try to do. We try to make the world a better place. And the other day, I thought we could make the world a better place as we pivoted from very food at the Grace Harbor College to the students there, providing local sustainably sourced food to them that empowers them to have a better learning opportunity and higher outcomes. We're pivoting and trying to move into Joe's Deli. So we go there and a place where like, you know, I just was buying crackers there like a few months ago, maybe. The police, I'm told, have gone in, broken a window to quote, "get somebody out." And the people in there, as a result of the police breaking the window, have taken that as a sign that they can go in there, just use it however they want, and they've cut a hole in the ceiling and made a latrine so that stuff is dripping down into the fryers. And we're talking like a million dollars worth of food stuff. I'm talking like hundreds of square feet of walk-in coolers. I'm talking what could have been a hub of something that could have really helped the town. And it's ruined. You can't, you can't make a food storage area out of the bottom of a porta potty, which is what that place has become. And I feel like that this is staged. I feel like it's intentional. I feel like it's set up so that you deprive a person, use a city, and I see that we're working on it. It's part of your job to provide basic human resources like sanitation, water, education, nutrition. And when we provide those, it creates a more equitable society. And with metrics like the Gini coefficient, we can see that that benefits everybody in the long run. And when you talk about education, you're looking at returns that can take up to 20 years. So I'm saying, can we make a nice place for these kids to go to? They can't. That's not gonna happen. There's still gonna be a methadone clinic there and everything that goes with it. And you say, oh, people are camping on the streets. We can't enforce. And it's probably the whole harbor's fault, right? I mean, that's what, we wanna take people who've gone in and literally scrubbed the latrines of these homeless people who've gone in and taken care of them day in and day out and dedicated their lives. And you wanna like point the finger at them? That's, that's, that's totally absurd. I've seen it when I call into dispatch and I say, people are smoking off of foil, blah, blah, blah. They say, well, why did you move where you did? How do you vote? The dispatch person should not be asking me how I vote. I had an apartment, I have 41 people displaced, an apartment burned down next to me where I was, I saved these people's lives. I had to hold a water hose for 10 minutes because the dispatch kept saying, well, are you sure there's a fire? Are you sure there's a fire? We've had three structure fires. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Delbert Seidel. I'm ward number two. I've had an issue with the nuisance house in our neighborhood. It was a little bit of a dress last year after recording our conversations with Bill Cedar and his boss, Lindy, I forget her last name. They came in, cleaned a little bit of the garbage up, and then closed the case. And then it's gotten worse. They pulled all the garbage out of the interior of the house and now they piled actually on city easement. And so I went in there the other day with my wife to make another complaint. And we had Bill Cedar actually turn around, walk away from us, went back and sit down in his office and would not respond to me. And so I rang the bell. And Lindy, his boss, walked by, it's not my case, it's not my case. So, forget the lady's name, her boss, actually came over later and took some pictures, but still this day, there's been no case opened up. And this is a dereliction of duty. This is a code enforcement officer. He's required to come and take my complaint, at least look into it. And they just actually just turned around and walked and sat down in their office and would not take the case. And we're talking about one of your council members' brothers as well as, you know, code enforcement officer. This is, you know, maybe it's not, if we lived up in the Bel Air area, this wouldn't happen. But, you know, and everybody says, that's not, you know, oh, it's not that, it's not that. But it is that. We live in, you know, towards, you know, said Cosmopolis, right on the main drag. I've spent a lot of time and money cleaning up our house, this house that we bought. We own a half a block of property right before Cosmopolis, and we get ignored over there. It's basically a garbage dump right behind us. And there's no action. They don't want to take any action upon it. I have nothing to, you know, except come here and complain. You know, it's forcing me out of this town, you know? And I'm a taxpayer of a half a block of property. This is ridiculous, you know? You should have at least taken our complaint. You know, maybe they don't like the fact of being reported, but that's what it took last year to get them to do anything. And this is real embarrassing to work out. I don't know what else to do except to keep complaining. That's what we're told. Law enforcement's been called probably 30 times last year from the drug activity that's in these two houses. And, you know, it's 111 Mead Street, you know, is the main complaint. And this is just, I don't know what else to do here except for spend my three minutes and complain more about it till something gets done. You know, I've been told Officer Green here would take and look into the people living in unfit housing. She's living in a box van, this lady is. And still no comment, no, no nothing, no response back. I asked for a response back from law enforcement, we get ignored. It's getting really irritating, you know? And I don't know what else to do except sell our house for a minimum price of what we can get, but the people in that neighborhood have already done that. You know, they've lost almost $100,000, you know, on a house that the church come and fixed up right next to them, but there was heroin addicts doing dope and, you know, in their shed right beside it, where they were trying to show the property and they took $100 loss, $100,000 loss on that house. And I spent a lot of time and energy and money trying to fix this up, you know, and make our entrance to our Aberdeen look decent and get ignored.
Those three minutes, sir. Thank you.
First, Seidel, you said Mead Street, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Left 1.1 Mead.
Here's the show to the seniors. I believe I'm in ward two. Anyways, the city's done really well for the park. I call it the dump, the city dump, because the city dumps cleaner than my park. They put those concrete or cement blocks up. Unfortunately, it's not stopped the people from the activity. Now, they bring in all their salon and they block me because they live right across from me. Seven and eight cars will park out there with the salon, and I can't even get into my parking place in front of my home, nor can I get out. And so I'm not sure who to call because being private property, we don't have a manager. The owner doesn't do anything. And so I'm wondering, do I call the police? And will they do anything? Because it is private property. The second thing I have a slight problem with is there is an apartment building behind where I live. The big, big one, I'm sure you know where it's at. East Curtis, I think it is. Kind of on West Curtis, and somehow East Curtis is right behind me. They are taking all of their garbage and furniture and mattresses. And there is a space in between their fence and behind the park, which is supposed to be a waterway. And they are throwing mattresses and furniture and all their garbage over onto our Sunday Park. And whom do I contact? Because it's gotten to be outrageously bad, really, really bad. And it's all under code enforcement. They don't have a manager. I've gone over there several times. They have no manager on duty anymore. They have no idea who to call. But when the people move up, their trash comes on the other side of the park by where we are. And it's pretty bad. And it's right behind mine, which is trailer 10. And trailer nine is where all this stuff is. And it's gotten really bad. And I'm kind of wondering, whom do I call? So maybe someone can tell me after the meeting, whom do I need to contact to facilitate the numerous cars that blocked me in and the garbage that's from the apartment building? That's all I have to say. And I'm really happy with the block. Just need to get rid of the coppers.
Thank you.
I'm John from the Ramsey with Ward five. And I'm here to present, represent clean streams and memes. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah. Okay.
So far, we've done five cleanups this year. We've cleaned up 328 pounds in our watershed, average about 65, which is on point for how many pounds we usually pick up. And about 280 recycled containers, 35 syringes, which is a little bit over average of five syringes for cleanup. Yeah, and I just wanted to say thank you for disposing of the garbage.
Thank you for doing it, by the way. It's appreciated.
Hello. My name is Val Porson. I'm in Ward one. I am a student at Aberdeen High School. When school is out, I walk down through the bus stop to, I walk down to catch a bus home. Five times in the past two weeks, my friend and I have nearly been hit by a car speeding through the school now. Can the police, can the police please watch these places more to catch the speeders? I am scared one, I am scared one of these days someone is going to get hurt. Thank you very much.
Thank you for schools, then?
Aberdeen High School.
I'm Sam, Ward three. So I went with somebody, a friend of mine, and had a look at this property that you guys are thinking about buying. This is crazy. This is way, how many thousands of dollars are we gonna spend as taxpayers? Are you guys to just take a chance on these people? 90% of these people aren't even gonna show up. So I don't even understand the point of it. We pay a city administrator a quarter of a million dollars a year. You wanna spend $500,000 on a, on a drug center or whatever you guys are calling it. And they're not even gonna show up, the biggest portion of it. It's just ridiculous. I would like, I would like a resolution by this city council to stop this process of buying this building for the homeless. I want this resolution to be set up and show some common sense concerns and concerns for the taxpayers of this town. I've lived here darn near 60 years, and I have never seen this town as bad it has been in the last 15 or 20 years. I, just last night, I was telling Chief Green, I got up to go to the bathroom last night at about 12:30 or 1 o'clock, I looked out my window to see if my son was home yet, and there's a guy sitting right behind my wife's car in my driveway. So I go out there, tap on his window. He's got a rubber band around his arm wing, just getting ready to put a needle in it. The laws need to be taken care of. And each city council member in this, in this place right now, needs to get off their rear ends and start doing their job because, you guys, this is ridiculous. This is way out of hand, the thousands of dollars it takes to clean up garbage every month, and then it doesn't even get done every month. And then we have a meeting and it gets decided we should probably do that every month, and it still looks like hell. We're putting out a whole lot of money for a whole lot of nothing. That's what we're putting all this money out for. I don't know. I hope you guys know what you're doing because it ain't worth taxpayer's purse. Not one more red center.
You're Val Smith, Bushell Valley. I wasn't gonna get up here and talk tonight. And he just reminded me that we both went over and looked at that property. Well, that property used to belong to the Higueras. I took that waste all there for quite a long time. I've been in that business, had been for about 35 years. I would caution you about pursuing a plan of purchasing that piece of ground, okay? Because you're gonna get into some, some problems with the ecology, not problem, but demands. And you will be exceeding dollars that we don't have, county doesn't have. We're putting money into a dark hole, and it's going to take a lot of money to feed that hole. It is going on all over this nation. Now, it's my understanding, ma'am, correct, if you're wrong? If I'm wrong, that you put the word out that, one, Mr. Brown, Calver, California, did that, and what a mess. And this has gone to the courts now. And so the courts are gonna muster up in April to reconsider what they did in wasting. We're part of that mess. We supported it and sunk a lot of money into it. And the business people in this community are taking it in their shorts. You don't really hear about a lot of it. You heard a little bit tonight from a, from a taxpayer, a property owner. I see a lack of teamwork. Chief, I hope you had your ears open here. I'm hearing that officers are not doing their job. That bothers me. And maybe I need to sit down with you and find out what's going on, and we can help out. But when our police officers aren't doing their job, that is a serious problem, sir. And to you, you're an employee for the council. If council has offered, an officer should come with you to go get funding for this hole that I'm talking about. Invite them. Give them an early warning so they can show up, and that's not being done. That's what I'm hearing. And I don't wanna get up here and throw rocks at you guys because you're all stand-up citizens. You're out doing a job that a lot of people won't do. But for crying out loud, we gotta start pulling together here. This is a small town. It's a diamond in the rough. We're one of four ports, western United States, exposed to the Pacific Rim market. And we're doing nothing, absolutely nothing. Maybe cars down there. We can do better. So please, thank you, brother. Okay? Appreciate it.
Thank you, Patty Thomas, Ward five. Okay, I wasn't gonna come up here, but I noticed when it was mentioned that the city administrator was making a quarter of a million dollars almost, that she shook her head. Okay, let's get down to the facts is, from what I understand, she just hired in $137,076. On top of that, she gives about a $50,000 fringe package. She always gives a $46,000 spending package, okay? I believe she was hiring in on around stage three. So right now, she should be at stage four. And in October, she'll go to stage five, which will bring her to $250,000. That is a lot of money. And I noticed that, that certain departments, it's that the money's allocated from certain departments, and the major allocation is coming from our water, our sewer, and our emergency vehicles. Now, I don't know why we need a city administrator because for a year and a half, she's spent her entire time on a pipe dream of building a homeless camp for the county and fancying what they have in Seattle. A lot of issues going on at City Hall, a lot of problem, personnel problem. You hear it all over town. A lot of people not being able to talk to other people. The city council isn't even allowed to go for legal counsel. They're the legislative body of the city. They write the laws and everything else. She is to administrate this, and she's a high of hand at the mayor, I mean, the head administrator, and none of this is being done. She has got the city council to sign over and make them report to her and not to the mayor first. So.
Yes.
We have a practice in this chamber of not using the comment period to, to trash our fellow people. This is a place where we respect those who serve and, and concerns and points can be made without speaking ill of anyone.
Thank you.
Thomas, did you have a concern or point that you were going to get to?
Now, I almost lost my train of thought because next time, you'll have to bring seven little goodies on another council person here, and I'm real happy to share them too. It's just, we have department directors here that make like $160,000 plus with their benefit package, they're shooting over $200,000. This little city cannot afford this. When we've got department heads that make this kind of wages, and then they wanna build this camp that they want to pay them a prevailing wage, most of the people in this town do not make a prevailing wage. Most of the people in this town do not make a prevailing wage. You're talking about wages with major benefits. All these people are going to have to all kinds of goodies and list a million and millions of dollars worth of insurance they have to carry in the, in the, and the city's going to be responsible for it. They've got to keep this open for 30 years or they have to pay the 500,000 back to the county. So there's a lot of stuff going on here that council's not allowed to talk to attorney, uh, uh, council's not allowed to talk to city employees.
That's three minutes, thank you, Thomas.
Needs to be looked at. Keep a wait, open your eyes up.
Thank you. Is, is there anybody else? Okay, now moving on to the consent agenda.
To approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the February 14th meeting, accounts payable and payroll. Second.
If a person is standing, is there any comment? All right. Seeing none, I'm all in favor.
I.
Oppose? Passes? Like we have no presentations, so I'll go on to the mayor's report. And I'm in a running scared to say anything, but I'm not trying to make light of anybody or anything anybody said, but, um, wow, I, I just wanted, I have a few things to say here. First off was, got this wonderful little card from a little girl at St. Mary's and it says, this is the day which the Lord have made, Psalms, uh, 118, 24. And inside it says, thank you, um, mayor and city for supporting our school and community sincerely. And yeah, she's in the fourth grade anyway. It was really cute and you know, to share that with you folks. Uh, second, I have, um, just a little something I got to read this real quick. The city of Aberdeen Library Advisory Board would like to recognize Tony Hartbridge with appreciation for his five years of commendable service on the board. Tony was an active member of the board and contributed to the writing of the new library advisory board bylaws. Drawing on his writing skills, he also had excellent suggestions on a number of letters supporting library projects. Tony worked with the library, uh, board or as with the my, another library board member to evaluate the need for and then recommended a new cleaning plan for the library. Um, Tony also served one year as the library board president and rarely missed a meeting during the five-year tenure. He was a welcome addition to the board. The city of Aberdeen Library Board wishes to thank Tony for his dedication to the board, the library, uh, the Aberdeen library in this city over the last five years. He's indeed a citizen with the greatest tradition of service to our community. On behalf of the city of Aberdeen Library Board and as the mayor of Aberdeen, I'd like to thank Tony for his years of service. Um, so, uh, I did, I have a few other things here, but listening to all the comments kind of made me change my mind. I just wanted to say, uh, that, um, everybody gets old and most of us end up with a fixed income. And, um, as we're not wanting to help the homeless people, I wish that we would think about what happens to an elderly person on a fixed income who is, uh, has their rent raised to a point that they've become homeless. Um, I'd hate to think that we cast every homeless person in the same category as being a bad person. They're not, a lot of them just need a helping hand. So as a city mayor, I'd like to think that we are all trying to, to lend that helping hand wherever we can. And that's my comment and, um, okay, so now council reports. See, uh, any, are there any council reports?
Well, the homeless committee didn't meet this, we're meeting next week.
Okay. Any other? No? Okay, staff report and I'll let the city administrator go first.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I submitted a report to you. It was in your mailboxes if you haven't already received them. Um, the emergency management, Grace Harbor and Pacific County Emergency Management will be hosting classes, a class in Montesano on March 20th for elected officials, um, to understand your roles during a disaster. So, um, I think it's very important that you attend that. I've included, um, a contact so that you can get registered, um, if you would like to attend. Um, we have successfully, um, installed a camp, one of our first camera downtown. Um, it provides a 360 view of the alley. I'm sure Chief Green will talk a little bit more about that. I don't know if I stole any vendors. Sorry about that. Um, so, excuse me. And, um, so the first floor council member office remodel, um, that was something that the council had wanted to see happen so that you can meet with different constituents and have access to a computer and a space to work. Um, that is, that's kicked off. And so we do have some things in there and so I've asked staff to kind of remove those. So we're just kind of taking our steps to be able to get that done for you guys. Um, again, the report is in your mailboxes and if you have any questions about it, please feel free to ask.
Uh, also for the council, if any of the, I moved out of the office that was over here. There is a computer in it. So if anybody wants, wants to use it, just let me know again. Okay, uh, now, uh, directors reports.
See, the garden parks director, as councilperson Ellis mentioned, there is a committee report that was amended requesting that the council authorize the Parks Department to apply for a logic tax grant for the Little League State Tournament. The reason for the special request is we did not find out that we were awarded the tournament until after the logic tax, um, grant application was advertised last year. The last time the Aberdeen has been awarded a major state tournament was in 2007. So it's been 17 years since we've been successful in receiving this tournament. We want to make this tournament something special so that those thousands of people who are coming from all over the state of Washington to Aberdeen have a good experience in hopes that we can get awarded another tournament in the future. So I hope that you approve this request. This, at this point just allows us to apply. You are not awarding any funding tonight. It just gives us the opportunity to submit an application. Thank you.
We did a motion on that or we just go on to?
I think I want to report.
Evening. Um, Rick Sanger, public works director. Uh, I want to take this opportunity to speak on behalf of one of my employees that's being considered for a promotion um, to accountant three, Cindy Mahama. Cindy Mahama is the best accountant I've worked with in 26 years. Uh, very qualified, has the knowledge that she needs to do the job. I know there was, uh, some statements at the personnel committee that maybe she got some kind of specialized training. She did not. That was on my behalf. I requested that we were able to meet with the acting finance director so we could get some more questions answered that had gotten unanswered for over a year and a half. So we met with the acting finance director, got those questions answered. There've been no specialized training. She, she needs qualifications right now. So, thank you.
Good. If your list is city, congratulations. All right. Any other? No. Okay. Uh, request for council action, open the floor to the finance committee.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I'll be giving the report since council member C. Doris, um, engaged in other things. Just a few highlights to report on. Um, January sales tax numbers came in, um, 2.63% less than last year. Um, but the budgeted sales tax revenues, um, that were projected to be, um, a bit over five and a half million were actually, um, $668,253 more. So, um, oh, I'm sorry, we're misreading here. Um, $73,513 more than projected. So that helps. Um, staff that's working on an asset replacement plan. This plan will help the city financially plan for replacing large equipment and vehicles before they reach the end of their useful life. Um, there's also some policies that are being developed, um, some gaps. And, um, a lot of work was cleaning up the records vault. And it looks like we'll be, um, getting a grant of about $50,000.
Applying for.
Pardon?
Applying for.
Oh, we'll be applying for a grant of $50,000, um, to help with records. Scanning, digitizing those records. Um, there were some water bills that were unpaid and in February, the city disconnected service at 82 home, then reconnected 59 once payment was made. We're working with coastal community action program to connect those households, um, with programs that help them get their bills paid and, um, that's been very helpful for residents as well as the city. Okay. So moving forward with the report, we have a report, a request from finance recommending that city council reconsider the LTAC grant, allowing the Parks Department to apply for an additional LTAC grant for the Little League State Tournament. I move we approve this request. Second.
Been moved in second. Was there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pass.
Uh, and then there's a, um, a resolution, replacing resolution 2018-18 amending the Aberdeen Museum of History's collections management policy. And I move we table this until our next meeting. I second it.
And second, is there any discussion?
Um, mayor?
Yes.
There were a few items in that policy that, um, that spurred a few questions. And so to give staff time to, um, follow up on those questions, this would be super helpful.
Okay. Anything else? Right, moved in second. Did the, the, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, passes.
And that's it from finance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, public safety.
Hey, we've got some, um, police report and fire department report and some, um, um, Casey's going to do the, uh, the items first. Do you want to do the agenda items first, Casey?
What you want to do in the long part?
Okay, we'll do the four percent. Okay, so we've got an activity report. So we've had so far this year, we've had 5,855 calls. So far this year is up, um, from last year, last year so far, and it was 4,812. So we're getting more calls. So it's, um, up, uh, quite a bit. And a total of, uh, is up, the proactive, um, traffic stops for the police officers are up by 28, or 23.8%. So we have a lot more proactive traffic stops, which, um, is a good thing. We've got, we're up by 20% on our DUI stocks, which is good. Um, the, we are got, we've got a really old generator in the police, um, uh, building. So it's a 40 years old. So they're going to be, um, looking to have a more energy efficient propane or natural gas fuel generator. So they're, um, looking to replace that and that needs to be done because they've got a really old one. And, uh, they wanted to let us know the cost of hiring a new police officer. And there's a lot that goes into that. You know, and actually costs over $100,000, all the different background checks, like psychological testing, physical exam, um, training, polygraph checking, a background check. It all comes up for about 100,000, over actually 100,000 dollars to, um, do a check background to hire a new police officer. So it's very involved. And, um, so there's a lot to it and, and Chief Green told me that they actually very rarely ever have anybody leave. Actually, they just have people retire. So that says a lot for the police department. They, they're actually really good at retaining their police officers. People stay. And then it says a lot for a police department. So I, I was really happy to hear that. I said, you should, you know, anybody wants to leave, you should make any police department pay to have them, take them away. And he said, no one ever leaves. They just retire when they get older. So that's great news. And then the, um, the, uh, fire department, um, they're going to, they're getting ready to do an active shooter drill. They're going to do that at Lincoln, um, school in Hoquim and it's going, they haven't done one since COVID. And it's going to involve the hospital and lifelining and, and everything. They're going to do that on April 20th and 24. Um, they've got a staffing update. They've, um, actually interviewed two really good candidates. They're both very good and they, um, they finished their EMS cost, a service study. And so that's going to be out. And then, um, the other, um, the other, um, agenda item is Casey's going to talk about. So.
Okay, we have a request from public safety recommending that the city council authorize the fire department to apply for the fiscal year 2023 assistance to firefighters grant in partnership with Grace Harbor County Fire District Number Two. And that the mayor be authorized to sign the MOU between the city of Aberdeen and Grace Harbor County Fire District for the management of this grant. I move we adopt this report. Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, that passed. All right. Um, no more public safety. Then let's move on to public works with council member Lawrence.
Thank you, mayor. We have a public hearing and reports. Going to the public hearing. This is based up for public hearing on the annual project plan for the 2024 stormwater management plan. I move that we open this public hearing.
Second. Moved in seconded, uh, to open a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carries? Okay, uh, the public hearing regarding the annual report plan for the transportation benefit district is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on that topic, please come to the podium. Oh, I'm sorry. Why did I find the wrong one?
Stormwater's management plan.
The other one.
It's okay.
Weird if I add here.
For the stormwater management plan.
Oh yeah, this is for the stormwater management plan. So. Oh, I see. Up here. Okay. Anybody want to talk about that?
Over Seidel, four and two. Yeah, we're, uh, we're, we're dealing with some stormwater issues in, in our block area. They, uh, they tried to do a little repair recently, but it, we're at the very tail end of the drainage system there. The, before the dike was put in over in South Aberdeen, there used to be a, a pump shed that was, that would get rid of wastewater or stormwater runoff. And when they put the pump, uh, the dike in, they removed that fault from that area. There's still the concrete shed. Something needs to be done because every heavy rain actually, I just took some pictures of it before I showed up here. And we, our whole house gets surrounded and the green house, it's, it's, uh, I think something needs to be more addressed. I've been, they've been working pretty good with me to try to, to alleviate situation, but there's just being at the very tail end, it takes everything to, to run out before we get any relief. And so there's, it's like several hours, we can't even walk our dogs or anything in our yard because it's actually, we aren't up in the, the alley. They, they put in a new drain into ours, but it's like a big horseshoe that comes from, we was, we was at the end of Cosmopolis there. So it, uh, everything drains towards the old timberland area, uh, opportunity building there. I don't know what the name of that is. It's Plastic West, I think now, but, and then goes out, but, um, I don't know if they're willing to spend that kind of money, but we need maybe some, some kind of another pump system that was pumping over the dike and get that area relieved. It's really, uh, been an issue. I've, I've talked about it in here before. So every, you know, heavy rain gets inundated pretty bad. So every, you know, heavy rain gets inundated pretty bad. So, um, maybe there could be something to address that situation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Here I can hand this. Okay, um, are you talking about, okay, the water. I live on South Side. Um, in a horrible mobile, mobile home park. And there is, um, a very large concrete pump, I think it is, that has a huge pipe going into it where it's supposed to pump water out. When it rains, we have a lot of water, okay? Um, water pours out of that concrete. Um, so the, out of it just pours out and pours out into, uh, the park at that end. And then it floods the whole park. Um, we laugh and say that, I laugh and say that we're gonna start putting fish there. And we're going to, we call it Aberdeen Fish Place. Um, besides the pond holes, we now call it, um, street golf. So, but is that what they're talking about, the?
No, this is actually just the stormwater plan. So that's what we're talking about.
Okay, well.
But it's nice to know your issue too, because we put that with the other stuff you've done.
It's huge. I mean, water, I mean, I can't see it pumping in, pouring back out again.
Right.
Okay.
That's okay. Thank you. Is there any more discussion? All right. See, no further discussion.
I move that we pause this public hearing.
Second.
First and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Um, we want the reports, uh, requests from Public Works recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the interlokal agreement of Thurston County allowing for purchase of road de-icing materials on an as-needed basis. I move that we adopt this report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any, excuse me, is there any comments? See and that, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It is passes.
And our second report is a request from Public Works recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to execute the contract agreement for design work for the bridge and culvert replacement project with Shermer Construction. I move to read off this report.
Second.
Been seconded. Any comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries?
That's all we've worked.
Thank you.
We have one more item.
Oh, okay, hold on.
Um, we'd like to, we can go to this and the sale authorization on the gateway property.
Specifically, um, the addresses are one oh four South F Street, five hundred East Wishka, five oh six East Wishka, and Fuller Way.
The reason behind is for staging purposes for the, uh, kind of.
Okay, great. And, okay, moved and seconded. I, opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you. Um, now we're on to special agenda items with Council President Morrison.
I have a request from Parks Director recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the volunteer services agreement with the friends of the Aberdeen Museum. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Is there any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
I have a request from personnel recommending that the city council adopt the revised building inspector one job description effective immediately. I move that we adopt this report. Second.
Is there any discussion on it? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
I have a request from personnel recommending that the city council adopt the deputy clerk public records officer job description and classification and change. Becca White's title to deputy clerk public records officer effective March first, twenty twenty-four. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
Congratulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passive?
Request from personnel recommending that the city council promote Cindy Mohama to accountant three effective March first, twenty twenty-four. I move we adopt this report. Seconds.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? See and then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries? Right, thank you. Any other comments again? Please remember to keep your discussions, your comments down to three minutes. And give your word and your name.
Us, Fulton, word for. Um, I actually came here tonight to thank you for approving the funding for the hotel motel tax. Um, because it was on the agenda. So, um, you know, the hotel motel tax for the, the rainbow and art wall.
And, and, yeah.
So I, I wanna thank you for moving forward with that. That is a really good thing. And I heard a lot of talk tonight about people angry about homeless people. And why we're not doing something about that. And it costs to put people in jail. And when you put them in jail, you're really not improving their situation. You're gonna discharge them and you're gonna be in the same place. What we need to do is figure out a way to help transition those people so that we're not dealing with them. So that they're, we've got a life of our own. And there's grant money out there that we can go after, but if we don't create a space for them, then it causes problems for the police department because if they don't have a place to go, then they can be wherever they are. If you've got a place for them to go, as I understand it, then they can't camp out on the street. But if there's no place for them to go, they can camp out on the street and I'm gonna see them off the street. So I, just to kind of be clear about that, and there was one other thing, um, that came out that I wanted to, and that is city administrators. As I've mentioned before, I've watched this council for thirty-three years. And one of the things that I've seen about our city is that we tend to get distracted. We see the next shiny object. And council members come and go, and mayors come and go, and the next shiny object, and we see that, and we, we start doing something. And then somebody says, ooh, shiny object over there. And we run over there, we do that, and we didn't finish that. And then we're disappointed because we tried that and it didn't work. And we have a city administrator so that we've got somebody who has that long vision, that long view, and keeps us all moving forward. And, um, I don't know how many people have worked with Ruth, but I've had a little back and forth, and she's always been really good about getting back to me. And I like what she's doing, the way she's approaching things. So I just the other view. So, thank you all. Keep doing a good job. I'll try not to ride you, but if I think that you're not doing the good job, I'll yell here again.
Thanks.
And Congresswoman Ford, I just wanted to comment on, um, this. Can you hear now?
That's good.
Okay. Um, we do have some place for them to go. We have two sanctioned camps. We actually had three and we moved out of the first one. The, uh, camp and, and we actually, actually sanctioned the bowling area, but that was the lawsuit involved and stuff. But I've got public disclosures here that tell you where the, um, it was all approved, that it was all done on. This was Chief Shoemake saying, Mayor Shave and I had a phone conversation earlier this morning regarding the ongoing challenges with transits at the bowling building. Based on that conversation, the mayor wants to move forward and remove the encampment that has been allowed along the building. The city wants to temporarily allow these campers to move along the front portion of the River and H Street. See attached map, we've got, uh, from the engineer chat here that okayed and everything. It was all organized. Uh, they built Santa can and and the chief went on to say, I spoke to Director Sanger and, and Deputy Chief Stanton, and I will be, they, they want the they're gonna be done with the Santa can, and he recommended Santa can to go on the River and H Street, and you noticed it's on the, right down there. Those camps are sanctioned, and they were also, um, given permission, uh, that folks who are living in tents in the area signed us and were explicit approval that people could construct and erect shelters as their temporary residence. So all of that was approved by the city. They won't, they won't admit it, and, and that land that they call the DOT is Aberdeen's land. I have the, the maps for it and also a deed that's given to them many, many years ago. It belongs to Aberdeen. And those camps are sanctioned. They just refuse to do it, just like the homestead deal they're complaining about. We've got campers and cars and trucks parked all over this town, either with the expired license plate or no plates. And, and, and their, the answer is, we can't do that. We can't do anything about that. They're homesteading. We have to have a lot to put them on and everything. Then we have to make sure they have all these amenities. They don't have amenities now. Go on over on E Street, along Ian Market Street, and look at the, the the camping trailer that's been there over two years. The tires brought it to the ground. And across the street, they have built a one, and they put a tent over the sidewalk. I mean, a camp, camp people saw me another tent. They blocked the sidewalk down, and they're allowed to live there. They're allowed to live all over this town. I feel sorry for those people too. But, you know, we can't do that. We can't even put a camper in our own, a motorhome in our own, and even when they're high on, they think that we're living in it, and they come and tell you about it, that it's against the law. So they are sanctioned camps. We could enforce the law. And is that not true, um, Chief Green?
That's three minutes.
They are sanctioned. You, you did approve them. You did put them there. They were erected. I don't know why the story keeps going that we can't do it.
That's time. Thank you.
They're sanctioned. I mean, they're not, we can't do it. They are sanctioned. We did.
Thanks. Is there any other public comment?
Delver Seidel, four and two. The homeless issue here is, uh, how much more can the taxpayers handle without getting any kind of something for what we pay taxes for here? Question, I think, that it's all coming down to it. You know, I give, I stood here last year and talked about this. There's solutions for separating the people that are homeless in the drug areas. It's called a voluntary drug test. If you're willing to receive public funding, you know, people that are down and out literally would offer the drug test probably voluntarily, I'm sure, just to, so they would receive that money. The people that, that are doing drugs, that do not take their life, continue to do that, there's there's no way they're gonna want to go into these facilities. And so how, how much more are we responsible? Because, I mean, it used to be where a person used to help someone out of the kindness of their heart if that's what they chose. But now it's being demanded from the taxpayers, which is really irresponsible. I mean, I don't wanna help someone that don't help themselves. And, you know, I'm a Christian. And I've talked to Ruth with, you know, my pastor, we've had a pastor meeting here, and it's just getting to the point where, you know, we're, we're demanded to pay this, we're demanded to help the Rainbow Festival, where that's a minority of people that are, that, that requires. I don't really wanna help people like that. My, it doesn't go against my religious beliefs. And we're being forced to help them in our taxpayer dollars, which is, it's really unbelievable to me. Everybody's against God, and we're, we sit there and salute it. You know, one nation under God. I mean, it just gets ignored, you know, and I'm getting kind of fed up of having to come here, you know, I've actually seek legal advice, and we're, I'm ready to go forth with a lawsuit against the city because of deradiction of duty with the officer, like, you know, I spoke with earlier. And I got one that's ready to take the, take the case. It's gonna cost me a lot of money, but what choice do I have? Lose a lot more? So, maybe something can get done, you know, and putting all this on the taxpayers. I mean, it's not hard enough to pay for it. We're all struggling people. And go, came out from hard work, and that's how we, we've gotten what we've got. And so it's not our responsibility to pay for everybody. And a lot of these people that are invading our town, they're not even from here. They've never spent a dime here. They have, you know, everything they need. And, you know, how about step up? You know, I, I grew up in a reverted chicken shack when I first came to Washington here. And I could be there today if that's what I chose. And I didn't choose to do that. I chose to work hard, create something, have a, have something, maybe a rental home, something to help me when I get older. And, you know, I got, I'm forced to sell them to, to move out of here because I have no support from our city council members, city people, city officials. Sad. It's really sad. Thank you.
It's Senator Ford, three. Mayor, I'd like to comment on your comment. I'm one of those senior citizens on a fixed income. I'm one of those people that are on a, uh, a veteran's disability paid every month, so I, I know what you're talking about. I'm not talking about, let's don't help these people. If a person wants help, they're gonna seek help. Those people are not seeking anything but drugs and thieving and anything else they're doing down there. I would like a council member to come up with a resolution to, to stop this homeless shelter. And I'm not gonna stop until this is done. This is just crazy pathetic, is what it is. You're throwing money away for nothing. You know, it's okay to be nice. I bought hundreds of dollars worth of hamburgers for them people down there when they asked for it. I bought dog food. So don't sit up there and tell me that I'm, I don't wanna help these people. If they want help, they're gonna get help. Hear you. And Stacy, I commend you on that thing for the World Series. I was also an Aberdeen Little League coach for seventeen years.
Any other comments? I'd just like to make a little comment that, um, I'm not arguing with anybody, but, um, I'm not religious. I believe, um, Jesus was a good man, and I try to do what Jesus would do. I'm not religious. I just, I, I was homeless once. I tried, I reached out for help. There was nothing. So I just, I know some homeless people on our streets. Wonderful old lady walks around the shopping cart on a list to get into a shelter. She's homeless. And it breaks my heart to see her have to spend three years on the street. There isn't as much service as you think it is. And, um, I think it's different if you if you're in that position ever in your life, and it changes your mind about these people. I mean, okay, I'm sorry. The, the thing is that I wish we could all come together in a middle ground somewhere and just say no, not say no. I guess that's my philosophy. My philosophy with the city is, there's always an answer. There's always another way other than no. So anyway, that's my opinion. Who? Uh, okay, so, any council members with anything for the good of the order? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a few things here. Um, last Tuesday, Greater Grace Harbor, Inc., hosted a panel of city administrators. And our very own Ruth Clemmons, um, did a fine job of representing the city of Aberdeen. Um, and it was interesting to hear from other city administrators um, what, what's going on in some of our neighboring cities. Um, and then coming up in, um, Ocean Shores, the And then coming up in Ocean Shores, the dispute resolution center. Is having another of their harbor side chats. The, this is a series of guided dialogue sessions supported by dispute resolution specialists and trained community members. They're bringing Graves Harbor County into one room with people trained to help others respectfully communicate. So March ninth is Ocean Shores and then April thirteenth. There will be one in Aberdeen at the Graves Harbor Public Health Office. Twenty one oh nine Sumner. And it's a, just a good time to meet and talk with people. In a, in a safe. Facilitated setting. I think we lack many opportunities to have conversations like that. It's, it's a lot more meaningful in some ways than just. Chatting on the internet. But I would encourage people to consider. Attending one of these. And then. Saturday, March second, the Twin Harbors Waterkeeper has a tour of. One of the contaminated sites in the Graves Harbor area. You can learn about all kinds of nasty chemicals in the soil and water. And, and how that affects the Shenans River. So there's more information on that on the internet and I'm happy to share these. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd like to see if we can step back to the other chain. To. Suspend the rules and consider the second reading, the third, and for the annual project plan for the twenty twenty four stormwater management plan.
We didn't have.
The public hearing.
Yeah, it was, it wasn't a reading.
But there was no reading. So we can't move, we can't send it in the final passage.
There's nothing.
Well, then I was wrong.
That's good trade. Anybody else? Then that falls on you.
Okay, so. I, I think we adjourn for the night. We're done.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Try and stay dry. It's really wet up. Yeah.